The Lord, our God is the one who helps. Next, turning to Mark the Gospel, Chapter 9. Even there, it is mentioned about a point in which Jesus helps. Mark 9 and verse 22. Here the Father, looking on unto Jesus, he cries, saying, "If thou canst do anything, have compassion on us and help us." Even Jesus is able to help a child of God. And even today, he stretches out his hand to help a child of God. What is that help, this man asked? In the book of Chronicles, we see as to how a man who stood in the battlefield sought for the help of God. But here... And here, the man is beseeching the Lord that his child may be delivered from the demonic oppression, from the power of destruction. Raising through the Old Testament and the New Testament, we see as to how the Father's son and Holy Ghost have never refrained from helping a person when they sought for his help. Here, Jesus helped the child. Again, turning to verse 24 of Mark, Chapter 9. He seeks the next help. What was the help that the Father needed? Help thou mine unbelief. Then, from this, what do we understand? Jesus is more than sufficient enough for us to help any man in any time at any need. Not only for casting out devils. Not only for healing a person. Here, looking at Jesus, he asked, "Lord, help thou mine unbelief in order to dispel my unbelief." Again, turning to Romans, Chapter 8 and verse 26. Here, it is clearly mentioned as to how the Spirit of God helps within our information. Here, the Spirit of Jesus Christ helps a man both in a spiritual life, in his physical life, in his human and divine life, that he might be an overcomer and more than a conqueror. During the time of bondage, when they were searching out for bricks, making bricks in hard labor, Aaron gave the name to the child as this. He had no hope of a deliverance. Because they were under bondage for many years. But still, he had a faith, a desire rising up within him that God will help him. Therefore, he said, "The Lord will help me," and he kept Eliezer as the name of his third son. Even today, the Father, God's Son, and Holy Spirit is able to help us in any manner. Glory be to God's holy name. Secondly, if we happen to read about Eliezer. Recently, we are also learning about the individual life. When we learn about that, we also need to experience or practice this in our personal life. Exodus, Chapter 28 and verse 1. Here, the Lord is doing a work of separating from among the people of Israel. If the Lord should help us. Or if the Lord would desire to do anything through us. Or if you would desire that the Lord should walk through you. Then, a man need to separate himself in his life. Separation is not from his family, from his wife and children. But he should separate himself from all things which are contrary to divinity in this world. This life of separation is given much importance to the New Testament as well in the Old Testament. The symbol of salvation is life of separation. Turning to Acts of the Apostle, Chapter 2. He exhorted them, saying, "Save yourselves from this untoward generation." And the question they asked in verse 37, this was the answer. If a child of God should rise up for the Lord, he need to separate himself from certain things. The greatness of the life of separation is that if the devil and the enchantments, magical things should not touch you, then you need to have a life of separation. If you have the oppressions of the devil, if you have various working of the devil, like the devil is pressing you, sore, you are unable to sleep and all these, then that means there is a failure, you do not have a life of separation. Numbers, Chapter 23 and verse 9. Here, the man who came to curse the people of God, he himself points out the reason why he could not curse them, why he could not oppress them. These people dwell alone, they shall not be reckoned among nations. Again, in verse 23, he says, "There is no enchantment against them." Being conformed to this world, when you go along with the people of the world, the enchantments against you prosper. In the life of a child of God, he need to separate himself and come out. The whole lot of the people of Israel are people of God indeed. About the whole lot, the Lord says, "Israel is my firstborn." But the Lord tells of separation even among them. There is a life of separation even in the church. Even after coming to the church, even here, you need to do a life of separation. Because even here, there is a group who are contrary to divinity, who are away from God. That's what the word of God says. When we turn to 1 Corinthians, Chapter 5. I wrote unto you in an epistle, not to company with the fornicators. It not altogether with the fornicators of the world, for I must needs go out of the world. And it is not with me in order to judge the people outside. And in verse 11, he clearly says, "But now I write unto you that if anyone called a brother would do anything." Therefore, after coming to this path, the thing is, we need to practice this life of separation in every state. You come out of sin. You come out of the world. You come into the church. Even after coming into the church. There is envy here. There is one group who is called Korah. Another group who is called Jethan. And these ones also cross the Red Sea. But there was a contrary, a secret life within them, and when the time came, it was revealed. The Lord spoke through Moses. You come out of these people. And the Lord, in the church itself, send them into the earth. This is a life of separation. If you don't do it, and the Lord does it, you will feel it difficult. The Lord is saying something to you. And we have to do then. If he don't do it. Then if he does it. You will know what happened to Korah, Jethan, and Abiram. Therefore, we need to be very careful while in this. Again, 2 Corinthians, Chapter 6. Verse 14 through 18. Here, Saint Paul points out another life of separation. You need to come out from them. And be separate and set right. Therefore, here, it is said about a list of people from whom we have to separate. You have no connection with them. Wherefore, the Lord says, "Come out from among them and be separate; that's not the unclean thing." I'll explain you more in detail. They both were the elder brothers. They were in the same house. They were in the same tavern. In the same polie place. But when both of them brought in strange fire, they brought, both were together, but the third person was not connected with them. Both the children of same mother. All ministered in the same place. They were various kinds of ministries between them. They only did the ministry with half a feet distance. Both died, but this man was alive. How could he do it? Because he did not relate himself to that strange fire. Even there, because he was separated, he had life within him, but the other person, because he had no separation, he died. Life of separation is not the Pentecostal doctrine, but it is the doctrine of God. Next, Leviticus, Chapter 10 and verse 16. Here, Moses was angry with Eliezer. This was an experience of chastening. Moses was angry. Because a law was transgressed in that spot. Because when he searched for that kid of goats which was for sin offering, it was not eaten, but it became ashes. That which has to be eaten, now it is turned to ashes. Now, he is angry with them and shouted. How could you transgress the law? Then Aaron said, "Already two had died; therefore, I was afraid; I left it like that." Did not Moses know this? Did not Moses know this? Moses well knew that both the children died, but he says, "Truth is more important than death." True, that death happened for both of them in the same house, but again, if you transgress the law, death is sure. But Eliezer, he accepted the chastening. When others chasten us, that is a lesson for us. And some people, you cannot chasten them at all. Some others, you cannot treat them rough. Some people, you cannot correct them. You cannot straighten the dog's tail. We should not have such a stubborn life. We need to bend. And we need to accept chastening. That's what the Psalmist says. Psalm 141 and verse 5. A verse known to all of us. What is it said there? It shall be an all to my head. Now, not even smiting, just turning back and staring itself, it is something that we cannot accept. Chastening is a beautiful life. If a father doesn't grow up with chastening, a child, then it becomes the child of an adult tree. If nobody is minding us, nobody is shouting at us, leaving us as a wild tree, then what will happen? Tree, tree is strongest. But what happens? They will never allow it to grow on the sides, why? If it grows on the sides, then it cannot be used for the wood. Therefore, they cut it whenever then and then necessary. It will be difficult for the tree. When the branches are then cut, you can see it shedding tears, the milk, the sap of it. But when you accept the chastening, there is an anointing hidden. That is the doctrine. Proverbs 1:23. You turn to my rebuke. Behold, I give you my spirit. Turn you at my reproach. And I will make known my words unto you. You see, when the father shouts, the children run away from the schools and even their houses; finally, they are found in the hotels picking up the waste leaves. Where did the prodigal son stand? Finally, among the pigs. When you turn at the rip-roof, there is an anointing hidden. When we surrender ourselves to chastening, we receive the words of God. There are two kinds of steel rods. One kind of rod is flexible, you can use it for the building work. While some others, when they are produced in the company itself, they lose their flexibility and become tempered. And when you try to bend them, they will break. The Lord can use only those people who accept chastening. When they reproach us, when they chasten us, say, "It is okay, it is for my good," but when they chasten us, if you say, "They are doing it only at me, they do so much," then we will only break. How can you chasten a servant of God? He has no children to beat them. Then how can we chasten us, believer? Can you beat them? You cannot. Then what should we do? Can we leave them like that? Then the Lord will ask account of us. That is what the word of God says. Proverbs 6:23. Riproofs of instruction are the way of life. The little doses in that instruction will correct the person. Even then, if you do not reproach, then that means we are doing a cheating ministry. We cheat you and receive money at your hands. But correcting you is a ministry given into your hands. A child will not die if the father beats it with a rod. Or else, the child will bring shame for the parents. That's why Saint Paul is asking, "Should I come with a rod or with love?" When a man points out at our mistakes, we should accept it, only that person will become wise. Numbers, Chapter 3 and verse 4. Numbers 3:4. They did the priest's office. A child of God should do a ministry. We are all seated here, we are all having a definite ministry to do. We should not come and go as well wishers. We need to do some or other work of the Lord. If you cannot do anything. Then be seated in prayer in the prayer chain hall. Keep up the dung or wash dishes. Do something, only then our conscience will satisfy us, saying, "We have done something for the Lord." Then you may say, "That's why you have two hundred servants of God." No, it's not like that. Everyone delivered from sin is a servant of God, says the word of God. Turning to Leviticus, Chapter 25 and verse 55. Children of Israel are my servants. They are my servants whom I brought forth out of the land of Egypt. Having been delivered from the land of Egypt, when a man crosses the Red Sea, having taken water baptism, the Lord sees him as a servant of God. After that, he is a servant of God. And he has to do the priest's office. Not an ordinary office. There are various ministries. Some tribes, they did the work of bearing and not the work of priesthood. You know what is said like that in the Bible. The Kohathites, the Mererites, they would bear the vessels of the sanctuary. But these children of Aaron, they don't bear it, but they do the priest's offers. Again, Revelation 1:6. What is the word of God says? Having washed us from our sins by His own blood, He has made us kings and priests. Yet, when we see in Peter and Hebrews. We see about holy priesthood, royal priesthood, and grade keeps on increasing. Therefore, when we see into a life what we have done for the Lord, there is nothing. As we need to do the ministry of priesthood for the Lord in some or the other way. Next, 32 of Numbers, Chapter 3. Numbers 3:32. And here, he was the chief of the chief of the Levites. And Itamar did not get that posting. But he, he was the chief of the chief. What is this ministry? To keep charge of the sanctuary. And he has to be the oversight, do the oversight of those who keep the charge. What does that mean? He said, "To prayer." Did you stand in the faith? Did you read the Bible today? Did you fast today? Did you go to the presence of God? Did you keep up your holy life? And he was found to be the chief of the one who would inquire over these. We, the people of God, should keep up a holy life. Ministries will go on, but if there is no holiness, there is no shining in the ministry. You may do the ministry. But you cannot shine without holiness. We will be just one of the minister, and we will just go that way. But that is not needed. He was the chief of the chief. Because it is the Lord who brought him to be the oversight of all those who keep the charge of the sanctuary. He could not keep quiet. Because he had a definite responsibility, a position in which he asked questions to others. Do we inquire our children that way? You are a family members inquiring us that way? Did you go for prayer? If they ask, they say, "Did you go, you go your way." In their house, they ask, "Do you not come for prayer?" They say, "Did you pray? That's enough, you go your way." And the devil makes a full stop for the prayer. But we are people with responsibility. There is a sanctuary within you. Behold, the tabernacle of God is with men. You need to keep charge of this. We cannot work without responsibility. See, he was the chief of the chief of the Levites. See, he was the chief of the chief of the Levites. It is the Lord who kept him on the peak of that position. How many of us have this nature of inquiry? The sanctuary of God is within us. You can maintain it, you can also defile it. You can destroy, you can build up. The freedom is given into our hands. Next, verse sixteen. Here, his nature of oversight for these things are given him. Always he has to keep up this sight, oversight over these. The Lord himself gave this into his hand. The Lord had spoken to Moses and Aaron to give this duty to them. Seven ministries. Oil for the light. Sweet incense. Daily meat offering. Anointing oil. All the tabernacle. All that is in the sanctuary. And the vessels in it. He had to keep the clear oversight, a clear control over all these things. This, because we wear the dress in white and white, just because we remove our ornaments and do many things like that, don't think the seat is reserved for us. Is there oil for the light in your life? The light is there. But is there oil for the light? These are the grace. Do we have the mercies of God? If there is no oil, what is the use of it? There is a big lamp, but no oil, what is the use? There is a big focus light, but no current supply, what is the use? Then it will be totally in darkness. There should be oil in the light, and only if it burns brightly, God will move among the candlesticks. Is there oil in your light? You learn about the wise and the unwise virgins. The unwise virgins, they had no oil. But the wise virgins had a little oil. Some people always pray, Lord, keep me as the wise virgin, it is like, Lord, reserve me to be left behind at your coming. The wise virgin, the foolish virgin, both of them are left behind church. Because when does the bridegroom come? He comes at midnight. We have no time to go into that. It shows that Jesus appearing the second time in the mid tribulation. Some people not understanding that, they pray, Lord, make me a wise virgin. Another group of people, they pray, Lord, make me thirty, sixty and hundred. If you are praying for thirty-four, then that means you are making yourself to stand in the just past grade. For thirty and sixty-four, independent ministry is enough, not this apostolic ministry. A man who is partaking in the ministry of an evangelist, he will have this thirty percent. If he is in some anointed church, he can take that sixty-four. But those who aim at hundred, they need this consecrated life, but those who are aiming at thirty and sixty, need not have this consecrated life. Do you have oil for the light? Inquire. If there is no oil, today get it. Next, sweet incense. You just inquire, how is your prayer life? If you are a Christian, you have to pray. If you are. You are a Christian. You are thinking, why can't I go? How much money do you have? How is your future? We should analyze ourselves, whether we are attending all prayers, whether we are able to sit in the presence of God for hours together, and we should analyze ourselves and have an oversight over ourselves. Sweet incense prayer is much important. The Lord will give you time. The Lord will give you health. The Lord will raise you up. This is a time. And then he will not make. You will not get grace. You will have to be on bed. And that is another time. Therefore, make use of the time you get. Pastor Joel very often used to say. When the eyes are good sight, then you read the Bible and finish. When your knees are okay, you be on your knees much. Even before your hands get paralyzed, raise up both your hands and praise God. When you get time, when the Lord wakes you up, sit in the presence of God and put sweet incense. And the daily meat offering. What does that show? It shows daily doing the will of God. And in no house, they write like this, did you do the will of God today? Jesus said, my meat is to do and finish the work of him that sent me, he says, that is my food and nothing else is important. Is doing the will of God is our meat. You inquire and. Next, anointing oil. Are you able to get full in the anointing, or you have no unknown tongues, or are you found to be in darkness? Are you able to speak in unknown tongues? Are you able to speak in other tongues? I have not heard the unknown tongues in some servants of God. They worked with me, but they left us. We have to get full in the anointing. You have to get full in the anointing and rebuke. You have to get full in the anointing and command. That's what the word of God says. He said, effatha, and none could understand. What does that mean? Effatha means be opened, and the man who was deaf could hear it. That was a strange language, foreign language which Jesus spoke. And then he spoke, tallitha kumai. And nobody could understand that. Is it a Hebrew tongue? Yes, if it was Hebrew, then they could have understood it. And that too was an unknown tongue spoken by Jesus. Soon, the dead damsel could understand the word and she woke up. Is it not in that way? And another unknown tongue in the cross. And they could not understand even that. And they said, Elijah would come and something is happening. You speak in unknown tongue, open your tongue and speak. He that speaks in unknown tongues, he speaks with God and not with man. Some people say, we speak it inside. You go and speak to your neighbor in unknown tongues within yourself, and he will say you are done. He that speaks in unknown tongues, edified himself. He that speaks in unknown tongues, speaks with Christ. See how the anointing oil is within you, in what measure, whether it is increased or decreased. And the whole of the tabernacle. You have to inquire your whole body. Which part is the shortfall? Do you have shortfall in your mouth? There is defeat in your eyes? Failure in your thoughts? That which comes from your heart is defiling you, inquire. Next, sanctuary. Inquire and see how is your holy life. If another person is saying you are not right, you are in flesh, then you will have grief, you set yourselves right. In the earlier days, if there is diabetes, you have to go to doctor to check. For checking the pressure, you have to go to doctors. But now, nothing like that. You can check yourselves in the place where you are. You check and examine yourselves. Next, the vessels in it. How was your actions? How was the actions of your hands? How was your walk? Any sir had an oversight of these. Christian life is not doing something simply, but even the PhD would fail before the Christian life. If you learn in this life, more and more asking for grace, grace will help you to overcome. Look at his life of the Lord maintained him clearly, and he also maintained his life and went away. Numbers, chapter twenty, Aaron dies. Now, he got his garment. And all his garments fell upon this man. Numbers twenty, twenty-six. See, the garments is much important for a priest. That too, garments are given much importance for a high priest. There is a big law written about the garments of a priest. The comments, does it mean this thing that we wear upon? No, it is not like that. The Lord keeps in his mind a garment, and he puts on that garment upon the priest. If you happen to read in the book of Isaiah. What was he putting upon? There is a list of garments that he had put on. He had put on, the seal as a cloak. Isaiah fifty-nine seventeen, it is mentioned. Yes, there are various garments in the spiritual life. That is a subject. But here, it is mentioned about the garment of Aaron. When the Lord established the ministry of priesthood, he made a separate garment for the priest. When he just comes with the garment, glory will descend. So. It is essential that we have to put on certain things in spiritual life. That is why, when the devil touches a person, first he snatches away his garment. The man who went down from Jerusalem to Jericho, he was stripped of his garment. When the bride went away, went in search of the bridegroom, the watchman of the city first stripped her of her clothes. It is very important in our life is our garment. And in the Tamil, there is a proverb like this, man is half. Yes, you need to have half on your spiritual life, your garments. Whole of your life should be put on with divine garments. Spiritual garment is a subject which goes on for a long time. But that is your adorning. What are adorning for us? The calmly garments. The meek and the quiet spirit. Let this be your adorning. We should not become as the ones without garments in our life. When the thief caught that person, he stripped him of his garments, the man who was demon possessed, he was without clothes. Look at Peter who bachelred. And Jesus sought for him in the seashore of Tiburon. Now Jesus spoke for him. He heard that voice. Soon, a man said, he is Lord. Soon, when he heard that word, Peter went down into the water. Why? Why did you fall down? Is he unable to look at the face of Jesus? But the reason is that in John twenty-one seven, that he had no garment. And you can stand without clothes when the disciple called disciple, but not before Jesus. This is the truth there. And we need the garments. Not an ordinary garment. The garment of the priesthood. We need to put on a divine. When we see about the garment in another sense, it signifies the new man. In Ephesians, it is said that you have to put off your old man and put on the new man who is crowned with new righteousness and holiness. Numbers twenty-seven, twenty-one. Numbers twenty-seven, twenty-one. This Eliezer, the priest should come to the presence of God and ask judgment of the Lord. You should not ask a counsel for man. If a man would ask for a problem, will come with a problem, the priest should not give it the counsel according to the human way. That is a mistake many of us commit. We give a human reply for them. Or we speak according to our wisdom and experience and studies. We only teach them out of our experience. Experience cannot give a helping hand in all places. At one point, God said, you have to smite the rock. And the Lord thought that he should not continue the habit of smiting the rock, he asked him to speak to the rock, but he smote again. The Lord could not accept it. And because he smote, the waters gushed out. His problem was solved. You may try to manage your situation, but you cannot enter into canaan. It is that incident which was a great black mark for Moses. And with that, the Lord said to him, you cannot get into canaan. That is a big correction, because he gave place to his experience. And because the people vexed him, he worked un-nice adviceedly.